Are there any additions or deletions, corrections to the minutes? And if not, I'll be looking for a motion to accept.
I'll make that motion if something, I'll play it.
Okay, led by Commissioner Kern, seconded by Commissioner Meeks. Madam Chair.
We just.
We just do consensus?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, Communications.
Yes, you received a resolution from Meskeen County Board of Commissioners, supporting Little River Band of Ottawa Indians Casino in Meskeen County. Received on July 21st. That's all.
Great. The next item on the agenda is the public comments regarding resolutions. These are only on the resolutions that we have on the agenda today.
Right, Sheriff, thanks for the township. Resolution ending in six, seven. Capacity contract facing a wraparound services for $161,000. What is a wraparound service? And what, who's accountable for this $161,000? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments on agenda items? Seeing that there's none, we'll move to the consent calendar. We did have an addition to the consent calendar. Added resolutions ending in eight, seven, and eight, eight to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar with the two added resolutions?
I'll make a motion and we accept the consent calendar.
This is Commissioner Harrison, I'll support the motion.
It's been properly moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Kern.
Yes.
Freeling.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Majerik.
Yes.
Meeks.
Yes.
Ballrath.
Yes.
Werfel. Yarborough.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 10 yeses.
Right, the next thing on our agenda is the committee reports. We'll start with Finance. Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
Microphone.
Thank you.
Yes, what we did is we accepted our minutes. We voted or agreed to pay the bills. And our Director Jillian, no, Courtney Davis, thank you. She's only been a week, Courtney Davis, but we know her from all the beautiful work that's been done. Came in to talk to us about going into a contract with a company that does media and all. So that from our Health Department, should there be bulletins or things we need to send out, that will be properly done. And our Health Department is so busy with all, and so we agreed to that too. A contract, the person or company will not be our employees. I'd like to ask Vice Chair, oh, not Vice Chair, I'm sorry, Commissioner Terry Freeling, if there are other things you would fill in for us.
Certainly, so the business that we did is just that we looked at that waiver for, for the Health Department, which they also went to the Personnel Committee to discuss. But we also had some contract modifications for some roadwork from the Road Department. But outside of that, Madam Chair, there was no, no other business.
Thank you.
Any questions for Finance? Seeing that there's none, Commissioner Harrison, Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Bell. So we met this morning, as did Finance, we approved our minutes. We also talked with Ms. Davis regarding the donated funds that they're using for appreciation efforts for staff and volunteers. So she's got another request and we talked with her about that. So they'll be doing some open houses, they'll be hosting some lunches, as well as still having about $4,000 left to spend. This is, if you remember, this is coming from donated funds in the amount of a little over $10,000. And so they're spending that down now. So part of it's recognizing the efforts of the Health Department staff, but also the support staff in the various departments here at the county, like the Sheriff's Department and facilities and the like. We also reviewed and approved our quarterly retirements. And so they all seem to be in order. We also talked about the contract for communications support for the Health Department related to COVID and considered that and approved that also. So that's refunded by the COVID dollars. Health, or the Road Department would like to bring on a part-time person. They'll be putting it into their budget. The support staff for clerical and communications, giving them some coverage when people are out of the office on assignment. And so we've considered that, it's a very minimal amount of money. And then it will be put into their budget proposal for next year. We also talked about the salary study that was done. Talked about some of the strengths and weaknesses of that. And there'll be more communication on that. So we had, you know, a good meeting. And we heard from Lee Lull on Veteran Services, a grant for communications and support there and approved that grant. We had, Board had previously approved submission of the grant. Now it looks like the money's coming, so that's good news. And that, I believe, Committee, did that cover everything that we talked about? Okay, we're glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for PHS? All right, seeing none, Admitt, Jim?
Thank you Ezra. We met this morning and our first guest was Paul Janka from the Public Defender's Office. And Paul was pleased to announce to us that his fiscal year 2022 budget has been accepted by the MIDC. So he's good to go for 2022. And in that budget, it's $4,077,000 is a total budget. And I think everyone's aware that the county's contribution is 600,000 plus right in that neighborhood. And in this budget, it includes two entry-level attorneys and one social worker. So PHS, you'll be seeing that for the job descriptions and for compensation for those, entry levels and the social worker. Paul also provided us some statistics on the Social Workers Department, where they had 138 total cases referred to them last year. And their, their year runs from October 1st. So this is from October 1st to July 1st, October 1st to 2020 to July 1st of 2021. 138 total cases were referred to that department. That's one of the reasons why he needed a second social worker. He also provided us statistics on the number of cases. And they are going up as things are, you know, being relaxed. The court's starting to get back to where they're hearing cases again. And so the numbers are starting to rise and get back where they should be normally. That was all from Paul. And he said that they, they had some additional expenses because of the COVID, but MIDC is gonna, gonna take care of those. And right now, he estimated those expenses would be about 175,000. And so MIDC is gonna take care of that, rather than us trying to, you know, estimate what our losses are and doing it countywide and doing it through our funds. They're gonna do it through MIDC and their ARPA funds. So he's good to go there. Then we had Sheriff Bailey come in and see us. Kevin Stack came in with Paul. And Kelly Lesch also came in with Paul to talk about the, some of the things that are going on with the Detour, the M-139 Detour, as well as a farm vehicle update. And Commissioner Werfel would like to report out on that.
Thank you. Yes, Kevin and Sheriff Bailey reported on Inlinco, Hollywood, John Beer's Detour. Last week, we approved the 45 mile an hour speed reduction. And the State Police came back and said that that has to be issued by MDOT. There were some issues there in pursuing that and going through that. MDOT is issuing that order, I believe, today and it will be retroactive. So you might be seeing a resolution coming in the near future regarding that, if we have to redo our resolution. They also added, and you approved this morning, the four-way stop on Inlinco that was put there last week. And that has helped, that has, they, we have not had an accident there since that stop sign was put in. So that's a, that's a good thing. I had mentioned to him that I had received some feedback that people would like to see that permanent. And he said, when it is over, they are gonna do a study to potentially make that permanent. So that was some good news on that. So that is moving along. And then Kelly talked to us about the farmers. Last week, we talked about the farm and the farm equipment on the roads. And they, and she told us about, there's a lot of PSAs that are going out about, be careful, it's harvest season, all of those things. That they're telling farmers, they're going to farms also and recommending to farms when you're on the roads, put a truck front of and behind with blinkers on to help with that situation. They can also call the Waymaster for additional help if they need it. They, she mentioned that they need to make sure that they're updating their signage on their equipment, because sometimes it's covered in mud. Sometimes it can't be seen. So make sure that you're cleaning that off and, and doing the right things with your signs. And then September is National Farm Safety Time. So they do a lot at the fairgrounds with farm safety and all of that, because it's so, you know, so many people from the county are there. But definitely, they're doing a lot for that public service announcements and things like that. She did mention that farmers, if they, if the things, some of the things that John told us about last week and that I, I also had heard from some of my farmers, if those things happen, the farmer should snap a picture, get a picture of the car, get a picture of the plate. And they're happy to pursue that if, you know, the danger of it and all of those things. So that's available so that the farmers, you know, can feel at least heard and, and can help rectify the situations themselves. That's my report.
Great, thank you Julie. Any questions for Julie? Okay, we had some resolutions that we, we approved this morning. One was the one that Julie talked about, the traffic control order for the four-way stop to accept state funding for extra patrols in that construction zone. Red Arrow Highway Linear Park Pathway Project. That is Chickaming Township and New Buffalo Township are paying for the match from the grant. And that's for the design of the linear park in that area. And then from the courts, it's a renewal, it's a grant we put in for every year. It's for child and parent legal representation and child protective cases. So they, we authorized them to apply for that grant. Total amount is $15,812.84. 580484 is for motorcycles, $8 is for marine, and $10,000 is for the drones. So we signed, or I signed that on behalf of the Sheriff's Department. Then we had our Vice Chair and Administrator in to see us. We discussed the, the resolution for the Chickaming, New Buffalo Grant Request. And we also, am I supposed to report out on equalization or not? Is that still a secret?
No.
Why do I want to let the cat out of the bag? If I'm not supposed to say it, I could always say, okay, never mind. No, what we did is our County Administrator brought to us a, just a proposal. He's just, just suggesting that maybe we move equalization out of the basement, which I guess is the.
Ground floor.
Ground floor, it's, it's the basement, I'm sorry, it's the basement. Over to the Church Street Building. And so there was a few of us Commissioners from the Administration Committee that went and toured the equalization so we could see what the environment they're in now to see about moving them out to Church Street. And I think the consensus was, good idea. Move, move equalization out there. And then the County Administrator has some other ideas on what to do with that space and some other space, but that will be forthcoming. But for right now, it looks favorable of moving the equalization to the Church Street Building. And, and the reason that I wanted to make sure it was okay to report on that is because I think I reported out before, the courts want that building. And we're basically saying no to the courts and yes to equalization. So if you get any phone calls, tell Brian.
Just to follow up on that statement. Warren, our Director of Equalization, and then Carrie, the other Court Administrator, both met, they reviewed the properties, they put in proposals. I reviewed it with Buildings and Grounds as well as with, with key staff, just to get input on what makes the most sense. Both have needs, both courts as well as equalization have needs. I'm in no way diminishing those needs. But moving equalization is the lowest cost to the county and I think it's going to have the highest return to the county. Right now, our staff is in an area that while it is ADA accessible, the accessibility isn't great. Further, that space, when it was, when this building was rehabbed, that space was intended to be like a design lab for, for kitchen equipment. It sits on an elevated floor. It is, in the winter, it is not always the most comfortable. In the summer, it's even colder. It sits next to all of the heating and cooling equipment. So if I complain that it's really hot on the upstairs, the equalization team are wearing winter jackets. So it's a unique space and it's one that I think that the quickest return on investment is through equalization. I'm in no way saying that the, the courts don't have space needs. I think that this is, is one that it just outweighs the immediate request from the courts.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions, Brian? Okay, that's our report.
All right, any questions for the Admitt Committee? All right, seeing there none. Next is Commissioner Reports and we'll start with Commissioner Yarborough.
I have no report. I have no.
I have a report. I had the Community Action Agency Board meeting last night and we talked about a few things that are going on with the Recovery Act Funds. People have mentioned the rent and utilities, those things. Community Action Agency is doing a lot with that. In Barien, they don't do the, the HARA grant because that we have a HARA program. So, but they do the utilities and the internet. And they have been doing a lot in that area over the last several months. What they do when they're covering those is they're covering seven months back and three months in the future. So they're not just getting them right, they're helping them move forward also. So I just wanted to make sure everybody is aware of that. As an example, they paid out $104,000 in utility bills catching people up, 204 people here in Barien County for May-June, just for those two months. They, that's what they paid out. So there is a lot of work in that area that is going on. So I wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that. And then also, they've got an emergency shelter grant. They put in some new beds, new bedding, furniture. That was a $10,000 grant they got from the state, so that was really nice. And then there is some new cares money that they're gonna be using in the city of Benton Harbor for food and hygiene products, targeting some low-income housing complexes that they're gonna be going to. So, so again, to be aware that that's going on with the Community Action Agency. That's my report.
Thank you.
I have no report.
I attended the Barien County Broadband Internet Task Force. We met via Zoom and I will defer that to Commissioner Freeling to report out on that.
I also attended the Strategic Leadership Council meeting. It's the best practices meeting, had to do with how to spend the recovery funds that we're getting, that we have gotten some, we're gonna get more. And also, you know, a cooperative effort amongst all the municipalities within the county and how we will and should interact with them. And, you know, there's still some unknowns about where we cannot spend the money, but they were pretty clear on where we know we can spend the money. So that, I thought it was a good meeting. I attended it with, there were a number of other Commissioners there. And that's my report, that's it.
So I attended the MAC Regional Conference in Grand Rapids with Commissioner Werfel and Commissioner Freeling. We learned a lot of good information there, some about ARPA funding, how to spend that, and also some information about housing. And we also discussed the Delta variant for COVID. But all in all, it was a good, a good conference and I'm looking forward to the next time we can convene with MAC. I also attended yesterday the Community Correction Advisory Board and we approved our fiscal year 2022 budget. And we also had some discussion about just COVID. And the Sheriff reported that there's been 65 total COVID positive cases from last year. And as of right now, there are zero, so we're doing good there. We talked about how, you know, COVID and, you know, we're just trying to get back employees who, you know, we're trying to compete with private sector and also unemployment. So we talked about that particularly in the pre-trial supervision area. So that's my report.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I think it should be noted by Commissioner Bell, in his attending the, the MAC Conference on Monday, I think you, Commissioner Freeling, Commissioner Werfel now apply, can't apply for hazard pay for sitting through an hour, 20 minutes on risk management. So it was, it was a tough listen, so well done, sir.
I've, I've sat in on those before too, so I know it all about.
Yes.
Well, since Commissioner Kern yielded to me to discuss BCB, I'd like to just touch on the regional summits. Our Administrator was also there with us. And I will just say to the whole group, you can go to the members login and they will be able to have all of the presentations there for you to look at virtually. But there was a lot of great discussion around the American Rescue Plan Act, how we will be able to potentially use that in years or months to come for projects. And so there was great discussion there. We also had, I'm looking at my notes here. We, we talked about risk management and it was definitely a deep dive in basics on risk management and just learning how we can better protect our staff and the public as it pertains to COVID. We had a legislative update and one of the things that was interesting in that conversation, and I know yesterday that the infrastructure bill was supposed to come to the floor for debate at the federal level. It's been postponed potentially as early as Monday. But that is a big piece of the wait and see for ARPA money, of making certain that whatever we do is complimentary as we move forward and strategize how to use these dollars to make Barien County more resilient. Then we also had a presentation on community, the community foundations within our community and how they would be a great tool to help to utilize moving forward in, in what we do as a county. And then, of course, the last presentation was on housing. And I know Commissioner Werfel touched on it with Community Action Agency and talking about the HARA. And that is one area that we have so many acronyms. It just is alphabet soup. And so I thought I would just say, HARA stands for Housing Assessment Resource Agency. Barien County's housing, or HARA, is the Emergency Shelter Services. And so they're the fiduciary that manages all of those grant dollars that come. But through the Consolidation Act, there were dollars that were distributed to the HARA and it's called CERA with a C, and it stands for COVID Emergency Rental Assistance. And Barien County received over $3 million to assist with those who could potentially be in need for assistance for rental. I will send to this Board and also the Administrator some of the flyers that we have, because I serve on the Housing Resource Network Group. I will send that information. If you know of communities that could benefit from distributing that information, I think it's a great way for us to be that facilitator. And certainly with the potential of evictions kind of coming at a forefront, this is the time that we really need to make people know what resources are available out there for them to assist, to give them that hand up that they need as we respond to, to post-COVID activities. That is my report. Oh, no, I need to report on BCB, oops, sorry.
Great, there's more.
There's more.
I was not going to allow you to do that, because otherwise I would have had to sit there and I was gonna punt to you.
Oh, well, thank you so much. So yes, on Tuesday, we did have a Barien County Internet Task Force meeting. And we had a guest there from a company called GeoPartners. And they are based out of Minneapolis, Minnesota. And really, it was to kind of help us get some, some understanding and some expert input on some of the tools that are out there to take our county survey and not just let it sit on a shelf, but actually apply the data we've collected to.
We had a legislative update, and one of the things that was interesting in that conversation, and I know yesterday that the infrastructure bill was supposed to come to the floor for debate at the federal level. It's been postponed potentially as early as Monday. But that is a big piece of the wait and see for ARPA money, of making certain that whatever we do is complimentary as we move forward and strategize how to use these dollars to make Marion County more resilient. Then we also had a presentation on community, the, uh, community foundations within our community and how they would be a great tool to help to utilize moving forward in, in what we do as a county. And then, of course, the last presentation was on housing. And I know Commissioner Werfel touched on it with Community Action Agency and talking about the HARA. And that is one area that we have so many acronyms, it just is alphabet soup. And so I thought I would just say, HARA stands for Housing Assessment Resource Agency. Marion County's housing, or HARA, is the Emergency Shelter Services. And so they're the fiduciary that manages all of those grant dollars that come. But through the Consolidation Act, there were dollars that were distributed to the HARA, and it's called CERA with a C, and it stands for COVID Emergency Rental Assistance. Marion County received over three million dollars to assist with those who could potentially be in need for assistance for rental. I will send to this board and also the administrator some of the flyers that we have because I serve on the Housing Resource Network Group. I will send that information. If you know of communities that could benefit from distributing that information, I think it's a great way for us to be that facilitator. And certainly with the potential of evictions kind of coming at a forefront, this is the time that we really need to make people know what resources are available out there for them to assist, to give them that hand up that they need as we respond to, to post-COVID activities. That is my report. Oh, no, I need to report on BC Bit. Oops, sorry.
Great, there's more.
There's more.
I was not going to allow you to do that because otherwise I would have had to sit there, and I was gonna punt to you.
Oh, well, thank you so much. So yes, on Tuesday, we did have a Marion County Internet Task Force meeting. And we had a guest there from a company called Geo Partners, and they are based out of Minneapolis, Minnesota. And really, it was to kind of help us get some, some understanding and some expert input on some of the tools that are out there to take our county survey and not just let it sit on a shelf, but actually apply the data we've collected to put into something tangible that's meaningful, that could be a useful tool both for the county as we continue the conversation on broadband and how to deploy some of the dollars that we have, but also for our municipalities and sort of leverage that, that, that scale of opportunity for us to help all of our communities within Marion County as they're discussing how they're utilizing their ARPA money and perhaps even infrastructure dollars. Did I cover that okay, Jim?
Very, very nice, yes.
All right, okay. That's my report.
Thank you. The only thing that I would add to that is, is just so the full board knows, this GEO platform that they run, using our data, can actually finite it down to areas within Marion County that have, like, no internet, okay? They can actually draw lines out on their mapping and include these areas. And it will actually, through the computer program, depending on the type of internet that you want to get, whether it is like a wireless or a copper from like Comcast or a fiber or a hybrid between the two, and they can change those fields, and it will actually give us a total amount of money that it would take to supply broadband to that particular area. So that way, then these townships can say, oh, yeah, we can use some of our ARPA money to partner with the county to do whatever so we can get this to the people. So, but that's gonna be coming back to the BC Bit, and then we're gonna bring that before the full board because, I mean, I was blown away that they could finite that down and actually give us cost figures of what it would cost. So that's all I had. Administrator?
Yeah, so just a quick thank you for the commissioners attending the MAC session on Monday and then for the commissioners attending the SLC session on Wednesday. As noted, Commissioner Freeling, for any of you interested in the MAC information, we can get you connected through their website to access the videos from Monday. And then on the SLC meeting, I've already sent you all my notes from Wednesday's session. Senator Proz, he recorded Wednesday's session, and he's going to get me a copy of that video file. I'll push that out as soon as I have it. But one thing that was noted at the SLC meeting on Wednesday was increasing calls for assistance through the local United Way. So I will follow up with you two ladies to make sure that the United Way has all of the information that was discussed at today's meeting. Rental assistance, utility assistance was a very hot topic amongst their, their clientele. So that's on my to-do list.
I would be glad to share my notes from the meeting yesterday, but according to Chairman Elliott, they're illegible.
Mine were illegible too. The only thing I will say about that is, how many municipalities were there represented? Thirty-nine, was it?
Eighteen.
Or was it eighteen?
Eighteen out of thirty-one minutes.
Right. So, yeah, we had, we had very good, yeah, see, she has notes she can actually read. Nobody else can. All right. Okay, and with that, we'll move to general public comments. Please come up to the podium where the microphone is at so we can properly hear you.
Here's our podium.
Yeah.
I'm impressed. Heltor, Hager Township. I am impressed. Unbelievable. What that cost? Never mind. Now, I didn't know what I was gonna say. No. I forgot. Catch you next time.
Chairman, Chairman Frank Stone Township. Couple of things, you're talking about moving the, um, out of this building, but a few years ago, it was a grand plan to put in.
Go to the podium.
Thank you. I'm not going to the podium. Okay, you can hear me?
The desk over on the end is asking everybody to.
I'm going to be on YouTube to hear.
I'm not going to the podium. Speak or not.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Okay, the grand plan a few years ago was to move all this out to the campus, or what we call the campus. And what's ever happened to the last plan? Lately, it isn't, it isn't any of, um, thing here about moving out there. And we, we built the facilities out there, the health departments there, the animal control is out there, and there was this big plan, we even built roads in to move the facilities out there. What's happened to that particular plan? Is that still viable? Or, and if so, why are we moving it to another building here? Anyway, is there any way of getting these resolutions before they come? My wife taught speed reading, so I can read pretty fast. But getting them here, and there's a bunch of them, it's really hard to go through them and decipher what, what's going on. If you could send them to me, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
We've already posted it on the website for you.
Any other public comments from the multitudes that are here? All right, seeing that there's none, is there any other business that we need to talk about here at the board? I would like, I would like to say a couple of things. We, we always take, as a board, and we commend our administrator and Annette for all the hard work that they do in order to get us the agendas and to make these meetings available and everything. I had to stall a little bit today due to the fact that we had some last-minute things that had to get through, so I wanted to give Annette the time to perform those duties for us and for the public. But I think one of the other things, and I've been thinking about this for a while, I think one of the other things that we kind of take for granted a little bit as county commissioners is, we should be really commending our clerk, Sharon Tyler. It was quite amazing to me how our discussion on motions and then motions in between motions and then deleting part of that motion and that, how our clerk was able to wade through that and make sense of that and put those in the minutes. And I just, she does a, a lot, a lot of work to prepare us for these meetings and that, and I just wanted to say thank you. She does an excellent job. Uh, that's all I have on other business. Announcements and reminders. There is no meeting next week. I know the multitudes will be upset over that, but you're gonna have to come up with something else to do. Our next meeting will be on the fifth of August, on Thursday. We are not quite sure yet whether we have an eight-thirty committee of the whole.
We will.
We will. Okay. We will have a committee of the whole meeting, followed by our committee meetings, followed by a board meeting.
Committee of the whole is gonna be a busy agenda. We'll have an update from the Acting Director, Courtney Davis, on the health department's work with the local school districts on their return to school plans. And then we have a, a secondary update, and I'm looking at Annette, and she's not looking up here. I can't remember. Secondary update. Thank you. Medical examiner report will occur, followed by Courtney. So we will take all of the time that's allowed.
All right, thank you.
Well, I want to clarify that eight-thirty and eight-thirty-five.
Eight, so eight-thirty-five. Okay. I get kind of confused. Okay, point well taken, eight-thirty-five. I have no other announcements. If there's any other announcements for anything? If not...